All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Board's convening now in public session. We start off the evening in the executive session where we discussed strategies with respect to collective bargaining updates by town manager relative to fire, police, DPW dispatch, strategy with respect to litigation with respect to N-Star EverSource, strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-uni personnel relative to the town manager, and to consider the purchase lease or value of real property on East Main Street. Board will open the meeting now as we always do with public session, public forum. Residents are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. Anyone like to come to speak at public forum this evening? Okay. Seeing no takers, the Board will move on to consent agenda. Several action items tonight. First is minutes. The Board will consider accepting the following public session minutes. June 23rd, July 14th, August 11th, August 31st, September 11th, September 15th, and September 22nd, 2015. Second is parade permits. The Board will consider the following parade permits. Proponent Live Forever in Starting Point EMC Park, Ending Point the Loop Road. Saturday, September 10th, 2016 is the date, no street closings. Second one is Max Performance, Tim Richmond, starting and ending at Hopkins State Park. It's got two dates, May 15th and September 11th, 2016, no street closings. And the third item is a one-day liquor license. The Board will consider approving a one-day liquor license request from the HPTA for a chili cook-off to be held at St. John's on Saturday, January 30th, 2016, from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. They're requesting a malt and wine one-day liquor license. And fourth, Board resignation. The Board will consider accepting Bob Levinson's resignation from the Personnel Committee. Would anyone like to break out any of those items?
I'd like to break out 2 dot 1, please.
2 dot 1. So the parade permits will break out?
I'd like to break out item 4.
Okay, items 2 and 4. So Chair, I entertain a motion to approve items 1 and 3.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post president not voting, that's unanimous. Parade permits, Mr. Sestari.
I was just wondering on the Live Forever parade permit, noticing that the starting point is EMC Park, the end point is the Loop Road, but there are no street closings. And I'm trying to figure out how that happens.
Do we have anybody who can answer that? Anyone from the Police Department know the route? I saw him at himself the distribution list.
Lieutenant Porter, good evening. Please, the Board. In the years past, and we haven't received this year's plan from them, hasn't changed the last four or five years. They start at EMC Park, they go down Hayden Row Street to Little Hayden Row Street, Main Street to Pleasant Street, back to Big Hayden Row, and into the Loop Road where they finish. So there has been no street closings, no request for street closings in the past for this.
So they just run on the side?
Yep, they stay to the side. We use marshals and we use officers at key locations.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the parade permit? Okay, challenging a motion to approve the parade permits.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post president not voting, that's unanimous. Mr. Moser, item 4.
I'd just like to specifically thank Bob Levinson for his contributions on the Personnel Committee, and also specifically for the Police Chief Hiring Committee and the Fire Chief Hiring Committee that I had the privilege of serving with him on. I think it's a rare opportunity when the town has someone who does executive coaching for a company of the stature of BMC, donate their expertise to the town. Very much appreciate the efforts that he's made, and wish him well, and hope he volunteers again in some capacity.
Okay. Any others? Mr. Camaro.
If I may, I also would like to add on behalf of townwide employees, our sincere gratitude to Bob for the massive hours that he dedicated to us, providing training, much-needed training to townwide employees. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Bob as well. Bob, how long were you on the Personnel Committee?
Ten or eleven years, I'm not sure.
Well, thank you very much. And I know that Personnel Committee is probably among those committees where, other than those occasional searches, there's not a lot of spotlight put on the hard work that you're doing. We appreciate it as a Board, and thank you very much.
Chair, I entertain a motion to approve the resignation. Accept the resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post president not voting, that's unanimous. Item number 4, Board departments to the Irvine-Todaro properties, an action item. The Board will consider appointing candidates to the group, three at-large candidates, and we have a number of them listed. So, let me find my list here with all these candidates. All right, so Irvine-Todaro, we have, are we confident this is the right list this week?
Yes, for the Board's information. In fact, Danielle Genron, she's moving out of town in six months, and given the fact that the project life may exit six months, she asked that she withdraw her name from consideration.
Okay, so from our calculations, we have four candidates?
Kathleen Teague, Alton Chen, Patrick Sansonetti, Donna McKenna. I should point out, Gail Carey, who had applied, cannot attend tonight's meeting because of her prior commitment.
Okay.
And she did express a very strong interest.
So she's interested, she just can't do it. So we have five candidates for three positions.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just start, we'll start off. Is Donna McKenna here? Hi. Would you mind coming on up and introducing yourself, and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you're interested in this?
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Donna McKenna. I live at 132 Hayden Row Street. I'm a lifetime, with the exception of three years where I was traveling, resident of Hopkinton. I'm employed as Vice President of Communications for the Massachusetts Association of Insurance Agents, and I felt like I wanted to give something back, particularly in my neighborhood, because the school is going to be across the street from my home. That's why I volunteered.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. McKenna? Okay, so you're interested in the property because, again, so it's, are you legally in a butter, considered in a butter? Do we know?
I think so, I'm across the street.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's not going to cause any problems, right? Because they don't have decision-making capacity?
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Have you ever done anything like this before?
Nope.
All right. First time for everything, relax.
First time.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Is Patrick Sansonetti here? Hi, Patrick.
I am, good evening.
Hi. Could you introduce yourself, and just tell us who you are, and why you're interested in this?
Sure. My name is Patrick Sansonetti. I lived in Hopkinton from 1981 to 1990. Family moved away, moved back into Hopkinton in 2006, lived here since. I lived at 152 Hayden Row, which was also, I owned 154, which was across the street, and I believe legally abutting, although I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
I now live just on 154 Hayden Row Street, which, again, I can think is right across the street. Would love to get involved in the development of the property and express my opinion.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Patrick?
So is this your first time volunteering for?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thanks.
Alton Chen.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, same for you, yeah.
So I'm resident of Hopkinton at 3 Nicholas Road, in nearby Charles View Estates, or Charles View Neighborhood. I'm active member on the Capital Improvement Committee, and over the last two years, have certainly been interested relative to the size of this purchase for the town, would like to contribute to the long-term direction of how the property is utilized, how it is determined to fit within the town uses of school and additional properties. Certainly in Capital Improvement Committee, we've seen multiple proposals come through, and I'm certainly interested in helping to guide its future growth versus having lots of little pieces and parcels.
Okay. And are you legally in a butter? Do we know? I'm just trying to get a sense.
I'm not in a butter.
You're not legally in a butter, okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Chen?
No, he just filled in it. Filled in for me, great.
Okay. Any others?
No.
Thanks very much for coming forward. And then we said Gail Carey can't make it tonight?
Yep.
And so Kathleen Teague, is she here? Okay. Kathleen Teague. Okay, so we have three folks who showed up tonight out of five people who are interested in the position, and we have three slots to fill. Does anyone on the Board have any thoughts, comments? Mr. Sestari, you want to start?
Yeah, I guess, you know, my only comment, first of all, I think that this makes it pretty easy, the fact that three people showed up, and there are three vacancies. You know, initially, when we were trying to figure out what we wanted the composition of this Board to look like, I think that we were looking for, in the at-large spots, we were looking for some representation from neighborhood people, you know, including abutters, and then some representation from people outside that immediate area. I think initially, I was actually thinking that, you know, there might be two people on the Board, or on this Committee, possibly three that were from that neighborhood, but I've really had a change of heart on this. And, you know, these three people are all from that area, from that immediate area, as well as there being another member who's already been appointed, who's from that area. And I think these are the people who, you know, they have the most to be, to consider, you know, when they're trying to figure out what to recommend to our Board, go in that area. In the end, I think that we're all kind of thinking that whatever goes there might be something temporary. We want to make sure that we're leaving our options open for the future, but at the same time, get some good value out of the property right now. But who knows? It might be something that's longer term, and stays there longer term as well. So, you know, I just want to, I just want to give my vote of, I guess, confidence in having four people out of a seven-member Committee who are from that immediate area and have the most at stake, and then the other three people who are from other parts of the town, also giving more broad views, I guess.
Mr. Moser.
I think the folks that showed up, like they have, we have a nice mix, as Mr. Sestari pointed out. It certainly have interest. For the other applicants, there is no shortage of volunteer positions with the town right now. So I think I'm comfortable with the three that we've seen this evening.
Ms. Catino.
Well, I'm one of the members of the Board of that Committee already. Yeah, and to keep up with Sestari's remarks is that initially, I was, I wanted a very diverse Board. I figured a couple from the neighborhood, and then people from other parts of town, just to get a diverse feel. But, you know, I just love the fact that you actually signed up and showed up, and that's part of it, is to actually come out for the meeting, and came today, and so I think it'll be, I think it's fine.
Okay, good. So we have, it seems like, interest in all three folks. I will say I worry about Committees that are composed overly of abutters, but this is an advisory committee, and so we still have the final say, and so I think that sort of mitigates the risk. Because, again, this is a very expensive town asset that we need to be thoughtful about, but as you said, we're not going to do it all at once, and we get to have a chance to look at this anyway. So I'm good with all this.
Yeah, and with Mr. Chen being on the Capital Improvements Committee, that's going to give us some great insight onto what that Committee's thinking.
Agreed. Okay. So Chair, I entertain any motions? We can do them all at once, I think.
Yeah, it's all at once.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that the Board vote to approve Donna McKenna, Patrick Sansonetti, and Alton Chen for the Irvine-Todaro Properties Advisory Group.
As at-large candidates.
As at-large candidates.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to secondary for discussion. We're good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post president not voting, that's unanimous. Welcome all of you to the Committee. Thank you very much for offering yourself, and we look forward to getting this started. So you'll be hearing more in the immediate future from somebody, so. All right, thanks again for coming in tonight, folks. All right, next item on the agenda is staff appointments. Number of these we have to do tonight. The first one is a town manager contract, but the Chair is going to take that off the agenda because we're short a member tonight, and we always like to vote these things with all five members. So that's getting, that's getting put on hold just because we don't have all five of us. Second one would be Police Department Sergeants. The Board will consider promoting Aaron O'Neil and Matthew McNeil as new sergeants of the Hopkinton Police Department, per Chief Edward Lee's recommendations. Third is the Board will consider appointing Matthew Santoro as a department's newest police officer. And the fourth is Special Officer. The Board will consider appointing Lieutenant Chuck Wallace as a Special Officer for a three-year term that expired January 19th, 2019. So why don't we take these one at a time? Chief, you want to come on up? It's a police night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi.
I'd just like to start talking about the sergeant's process. The original list started about a little over a year and six months, where we had nine candidates. All of them participated in an extremely complicated written test, with many policies that needed to be studied, as long as books on leadership. I was pleased that all nine passed. We made a promotion off that list last year, Sergeant Tim Brennan, and now we have the opportunity, we have two sergeant openings, one with the retirement of Lieutenant Chuck Wallace, creating a position, and a new creation of a lieutenant spot. Now, the two sergeants that I have tonight, if you can bring them both up, would be Sergeant or soon to be, hopefully, with the Board's blessing, Aaron O'Neil and Matt McNeil. I'll start off with Aaron. Aaron did extremely well in the process. We recently held a second round of interviews, and I'd like to thank the members that assisted me. I was on the Board with Maria Casey, the HR Director, and our School Resource Officer, Phil Powers, and they were very impressed with both candidates who rose to the top in the entire process with the testing, oral interview, and of course, their backgrounds on the Police Department. I'll start off with Aaron O'Neil. He is an Army veteran of the rank of Sergeant, Military Corpse. He was awarded a graduate MP School, Army Combination Medal, Army Achievement Medal, and other medals and awards. He was stationed over a peacekeeping mission in the Bosnia area. He is a graduate from Westfield State, and he is currently with a bachelor's in criminal justice, and he's currently enrolled in the Master's Program at UMass Lowell, where we're expecting graduation next year.
Hopefully.
Okay. He's 17 years on the Department. He has been an FTO. He is the EMT Coordinator, Bike Officer, Firearms Instructor, recently took over the position as the Police Association President, and he's also had the opportunity to run and finish the Boston Marathon. And that's the only way you get a day off in the marathon, is to run it. At what time?
For 4:00.
Very good. He has also completed a task in honor of fallen officers where he's done six police unity tours. That's riding his bike from New York all the way to Washington DC. We also want me to mention that he's an all-around good guy. So at this time, I'd like to present you with Officer O'Neil.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us whatever you think would improve your chances.
The Chief did a fine job of giving my little pre-resume. But I've been here for 17 years. I grew up in Westboro, which is a tight-knit community. My mother was glad that I got hired by the town next to us, because I went all over the East Coast looking for a job, and I ended up in Hopkinton. Working here in Hopkinton has been such a great experience. I was given an opportunity. I work with the finest men and women. Those people that know me know my family is my closest thing to them, and I consider the Hopkinton Police part of my family.
Excellent. Does anyone on the Board have any questions for Officer O'Neil?
No questions, but he just sounds like a nice guy.
Say that at a traffic stop.
No, I'll tell you, you know, thanks for, thanks for everything you've done for, not just Hopkinton, but for the country, and, you know, and all the causes that you continue to help support. You know, it's just, it's great, it's great that you're finding, or making, I should say, making the time to continue your involvement. And, I mean, this is, this is, you know, kind of, there is no cookie cutter, but if there was, it's the cookie cutter of the people that we want, you know, in our town, and helping serve our town, and I don't think it's a mistake that that's happened. I think that it's the community that draws people like this, and it's also people like this who help make the community what it is. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Yeah, to me, it's just amazing. How does one stand out at the Hopkinton Police Department when every officer's coming up with new programs and initiatives and everything else? It's just great to hear, and it's an honor to look, to appoint somebody that's been involved in so much, and already has so many other community programs. It's great. Thank you very much.
I know your peers think very highly of you. I know it also makes Chief Lee's life really easy every time there's a promotion, so I know you really earned this, and congratulations.
Thank you.
This isn't shaping up to be the toughest interview we've ever had, I suspect, so. You're going to be days or nights?
I'll be evenings and midnights.
Evening, midnight, okay. And is there anything you would do differently, or sort of, anything you want to jump on early on if you get this election?
My 17 years I've been here, I've been on patrol, so I pretty much have seen and done every incident. We have an expanding, brand-new Department with a lot of great young officers. Giving my experience that was passed along, and traditions that was passed down from me, from the senior staff, I want to pass on and keep the tradition and the standard high that is the Hopkinton Police Department.
All right, I'd love to hear it. Good. I guess, well, thank you very much, and let's, we'll pick up all the votes at once at the end.
Okay. Next up is Officer Matthew McNeil. He is a 16-year veteran of the Hopkinton Police Department. He is an EMT, a motorcycle officer. He is part of the SEMLAC team as far as the motorcycle, firearms licensing, and fingerprinting, and photographing. He's the cruiser camera operator and manager, which is not an easy task. He started the FTO program, and is currently training our new Officer Santoro over there, while he's going to take on the duties as Sergeant. He has a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice from Anna Maria College, and one of the note that he humbly left out is that he was the Mad Officer of the Year several, well, he received it in Hopkinton several times, but he was also recognized as the Mad Officer of the Year for Middlesex County, which is a huge honor with many different communities. Should be noted that with that many arrests, it's funny that he has a twin brother here tonight. I imagine he received 30 looks.
Oh, wow.
And the year.
Holy cow.
And I'd also like to mention that his two daughters are here tonight, Riley, age 11, and Emerson, age 9, who hope to be pinning their dad tonight.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Welcome, Officer McNeil. So, anything you've got to say?
No, just I appreciate the opportunity that I get. Like the Chief said, I've been here for 16 years, and as with Officer O'Neil, I was hired shortly after him, and we've been, essentially worked our careers together, and with the senior staff that's in place, and like he said, the new officers, it's a great time to become a Sergeant, to help grow the Department, and to be a part of the administration to help the Department grow.
Perfect. Ms. Catino, any questions?
Yeah, I've seen you in action, and, you know, coming to Golden Pond and everything else, and I just think you're doing a great job, and I'm glad you stepped up for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a moment.
I've seen you out on the motorcycle, and I know, I know the other members of the Department think very highly of you. I know this was a very competitive process, as all of them are, because the Department is so accomplished as a whole, so feel good that you earned your way to the position, and I wish you luck.
Thank you very much, sir.
And Mr. Sestari.
Yeah, you know, just another, another great example, you know, just the quality of the people on our force, continuing your education, but not only being centered on yourself, but also getting involved in the, I think it was the FOT program, which...
Field Training.
Yeah, Field Training, yeah. So, you know, trying to mentor others, and bring people along, and maintain that quality of our force. You know, I mean, you just, you got to love it. You know, it's fantastic, and it's something, something for us to be proud of as a community, and Chief, the fact that you're continuing the tradition and bringing that along, it's a great time.
The piece he got, I mean, he's 24, is it 24 weeks now? And then he thinks he got a job, and it's all great, but he's got an 11-week field training program to go through.
Look back fondly on that.
Yeah.
All right. And you'll be days?
I'm sorry?
You're going to be days?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I'll go back to 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Oh, yeah, very nice.
I haven't seen that shift in 12 years, so looking forward to it.
All right, okay. And anything different you plan to do? Anything different you plan to do, or anything we shouldn't be aware of?
No, right now, I'm just going to try to settle into my new role, and then go from there.
Right on, okay, good. Chief Nathan, file to say before we make a decision?
No, I just strongly recommend that he select these two candidates. I think they'll be a good addition to the Department. I think they have great leadership qualities, and the thing that sticks out, I think you've all recognized, is they work with FTOs, and they're mentoring and developing officers.
Yeah, good. I think there's a global point, just to echo with something the folks said. I don't think we could be happier with the way that this Department grows people. And, you know, we've sort of, we've had this terrific ability to move people up, and I just, I think that's what makes the Board the happiest, is the fact we've got folks to come onboard, who stay here, and who are having opportunities to come to them that they deserve. And so we're, I think we're particularly excited about that, the growth trajectory that we continue somehow to be able to offer in the Department is great, from our perspective. So with that, the Chair, I entertain a motion to promote Officers Aaron O'Neil and Matthew McNeil as the newest sergeants of the Hopkinton Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post president not voting, that's unanimous. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sergeant, congratulations.
Thank you.
You've had a lot of fun.
I was wanting to...
Yeah, that's not so rude. It's been a while since I've called.
Congratulations. Congratulations. So we call you Gunny?
Thank you. I don't know. That's my response. Never. I didn't know. I haven't had to deal with Gunny's after 25 years.
Should we call you Gunning?
Thank you.
I haven't had to do this, Gunning, after 25 years.
Can we board a bit more? Absolutely. Do you want to make me do the boot? He doesn't got a picture of his son. I'm going to start with Neil. He's got 10 weeks to go. He does. All right.
You don't lay mine up in front of us.
Oh, true. Congratulations. Gonna move his chair. Come on, everybody.
This is your role. Aaron, don't be hiding now. We can't see much of you. Seen a lot of love there. What's those smiles? All righty, very good. There's another one. Everyone get their shots.
Good.
We don't have a chance to see out there. I'm working out of the backyard now.
All right, you might. Might. These meetings go late.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, and no less exciting, is the board consider appointing Matthew Santoro as department's newest police officer. Chief, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chat. I'd like to introduce Matthew Santoro. He's 23 years old and he is from Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Graduated University of Amherst in 2015 where he received a bachelor's degree in sociology as well as a certificate, a certificate in criminal justice. You'll use the sociology a lot more in his job. He entered the Boylston Police Academy as a self-sponsor in August of 2015 and he graduated January of 2000, January 15, 2016. Now, during that process, as he put himself through the academy, he was able to take the Hopkinton Police Exam, scored very well on the exam. And he, he was a, a great candidate because of our situation with all the retirements. We're able to pick him up in the midst of the retirement and put him through our FTO program. He did extremely well in the academy, did extremely well in the process. And we believe he's going to be an outstanding addition to the Hopkinton Police Department.
Matthew?
Good evening.
Hi. Mr. Santoro, officially still, so welcome.
Yes.
Come on, tell us, what can we tell us about yourself?
Well, I just wanted to say that serving others and helping others has long been a passion of mine. And I thought that policing would be the best way I could accomplish that. And, you know, being here the past few days even, I felt so welcomed in this community. You can really tell how special of a place it is. And I want to be a part of keeping that community safe and letting the people of Hopkinton know that they are truly cared about by the men and women of this department. And over the past six months, I've learned a lot about policing. And I know I still have a long way to go, but I have full confidence that I'm learning from the, the best men and women there are.
Welcome. Seems like at a minimum, the chief found a new speechwriter, so.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mosher, any question?
So, is there anything particular about Hopkinton specifically that, that either challenges you or really excites you, something that you've already seen that you want to dive right into?
I think it's just how close of a community it really is. You know, I've, I've met people who I've never met before today and they, they treated me like I've known them forever. And the department truly is a family. You can, you can tell when day, I mean, I'm on day two, but, uh-
Family good?
No, they've treated me with a, a ton of respect and, and like one of their own so far.
So, that, so that'll probably change once-
It's all downhill.
That's great. Glad to hear you're looking forward to it and really look forward to seeing you out there.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Mr. Sestari?
Um, you know, first of all, congratulations. And tell us a bit, I guess, between you and the chief about sponsoring yourself for the police academy. Is that something that happens often or is that out of the ordinary?
No, that, that does happen often. So, about half of my academy class at the beginning of the academy was self-sponsored. And what that entails is you cover tuition and, and equipment and stuff like that. And you, you have to get a, a chief of any town to, to sponsor you through the academy as, so.
Great. Well, I'm sure that you can, you can see just from tonight's, tonight's meeting and, and, you know, these go on and on, it seems, you know, we have a few a year where, you know, we're, we're talking about some of the accomplishments of various officers. There's, there are big shoes to fill here in town. And just the fact that you were chosen means that everybody has confidence in you. So, we're looking forward to your growth in the community and we thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to, you know, seeing a, a nice, a young guy coming, coming into the, into the group. Somebody that doesn't have a master's or law degree or something that you're gonna, you have a lot of great people to learn from. You can bring a nice freshman perspective and, and it's great to have you chosen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, we really like our police department here in town, you can tell.
Yes, sir.
We've got a great group of professionals. And so, you, I really say this honestly when I say, we, we think you should feel, consider yourself exceedingly lucky to be able to join them.
I do, sir.
You've got a great crowd. So, go forth and make us proud and do what they've always done and you'll be fine. And you'll, we'll be proud of you someday. We may make you a sergeant, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good. Chief, any final questions, comments for us?
No, I think just from his appearance tonight, kind of, he kind of stands out as an excellent candidate for the police department. As I said, he did very well. And taking the initiative, the, yeah, invest in, and self-sponsor yourself is a big deal. Shows you, your commitment. He didn't have another job. He had to live with mom and dad, right?
Yep.
And it's a huge commitment and an investment.
All right. With that, the Chair Lantino motion to appoint Matthew Santoro as the newest member of the Hopkinton Police Department.
So moved. Second?
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post president voting. That's unanimous. Officer Santoro, welcome.
That's not for you walking in. That's not for you walking in.
Thank you for that nice ovation.
Congratulations.
Can we record five votes for that?
He voted aye walking in.
He voted walking in. disqualified.
That's good.
If only they were all like that.
Of course.
Take this picture. Yeah. That's fucking cute.
All right, ready to go. Want more for the news? That's a lot.
Thank you. Good luck.
This is your son?
This is my son.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, you've got a no?
We'll take care of us.
Don't call it out. I told you the last year.
Yeah.
I didn't want to, that's why, that's why I stopped.
We're pinned.
Where are we going? I'm trying to get out of the back. One more check.
Congratulations.
Okay, and last but absolutely not least, the board will not consider appointing Fresh New Face Lieutenant Chuck Wallace as a special officer for a three-year term that expired January 19th, 2019. Chief, anything to add or?
I'm running out of things to say.
Quick, where's Officer Santoro? Get him in there.
He's out of uniform, so let's- We're just happy that Chuck's gonna stick around with us in a special capacity and help us out in certain areas. It'll be nice to see his face around the marathons where I can run up and ask him questions if anything should arise. But, he'll be handling, you know, traffic details.
Okay.
Okay?
Chuck, you don't need to come up, but if you, anything you want to say or you're good?
Well, thanks, chief. After four days, I realize I get a lot of-
Get out of the house. All right. Chair Lantino motion to appoint Lieutenant Chuck Wallace as a special officer for a three-year term that expired January 19th, 2019.
So moved. Second?
And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post president voting. That's unanimous. Senator Wallace, welcome back aboard, sort of. All right. Thank you all for coming in. It's been great. Item six on the agenda, liquor licenses. 2016 changes and hours of operation policy. It's an actual item. The board review the hours of operation policy for restaurants and related establishments and then consider approving nine licensee requests for a change in hours or other aspects of their license. And there's a number of supporting exhibits. So, here's the idea tonight. We have a memo from the town manager with a number of, a number of, basically a list of items on it. I'm trying to bring it up here as I speak. And there's a number of questions for us to consider. And what, the reason this is coming up is because the board said we want to have more of a holistic, right? We don't want to, we don't want to run the minutiae of everybody's business. We want to set relatively broad policies and then by and large, we want to let businesses operate as AC fit within the constraints of those policies. So, we, what we have tonight are a number of items to talk through. If we're going to change the hours of anyone's liquor license, we need to have a public hearing. We're required to do that. So, what we'd like to do tonight would be to talk about the, the concepts here that are in this and basically walk through this list, answer some questions. Then we would ask the town manager to go off and draft an actual policy that he'll come back with and we'll approve that policy as part of a public hearing. Everybody got it? Questions on how we're gonna go about this? Mr. Hur, you have a question?
Is the chief gonna be here for this discussion?
The chief of police?
Police.
Uh, he's here currently. We can ask him to stick around if you want to talk through things.
I don't see him in the room at the moment.
Yeah, I'd like to have him here.
Um, uh-
Lieutenant Bennett?
Yeah.
Could you ask the chief to come?
Did I ask the chief to come on back?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I was, I was having-
Chief Slammin'?
I know. I was, I was like, it's Joe, it's Joe.
So, thank you for jumping in.
I think maybe if he was in on it too.
All right. Okay. So, does everybody understand the, the concept here? We're not, we're not to, chief, hi. Uh, Mr. Hur asked if you could come on back. You don't, you, you can just kind of hang out for the moment. What we're doing is we're going through this, the liquor license revisions. And I think there may be questions for you as to your opinion on the judgment of some of these possible changes. Now, again, we're not going to vote these changes tonight because that requires a public hearing. The goal is to go through these items, right? Come to some conclusions, have the town manager draft a policy that then gets approved at a public hearing. Okay? Mr. Kamala, anything to add before we just dive right in here?
Um, no, no, nothing to add at this point, other than just to remind the board that we did provide the specific regulations from the mass general laws regulating the hours of operating for such establishments, as well as a database of all the existing establishments, their existing hours, as well as what they have requested for service hours in calendar year 16. In addition, we also provided the staff memo that gives the board different options for, to consider as you go through your discussion.
Okay. So, what I'm gonna work off everybody is this memo from the town manager to us date, January 5th. And again, it includes a bunch of appendices, including some, the list of the current hours and requested changes. Currently, as we all know, we, we do this on kind of an ad hoc basis and the goal is to get away from that. Again, let people have the latitude to run their businesses as they see fit within constraints. So, there's three options basically outlined by the town manager. And I, I, he and I talked through this and I agree with all this. Certainly, one is maintain the status quo, just keep doing what we're doing. Second is, again, just try to do a, uh, specific modifications. And then the third thing would be, again, divide town into basically a downtown area, which might have one set of rules, and then an outside of downtown area, which would be more broadly. Or in fact, we could do multiple arrangements if we wanted to divide it between 495 and other places as well. So, what the town manager did, because I asked him to come up with some basic concept we could work off of, was to, was to find two areas. The downtown core, which is Main Street going east to Ashland, also Main Street, down Hayden Row. And he's got a couple of different hours for that. And then also all other areas, which would be everything outside those, which would have different hours, which would generally be slightly later, an hour later outside of downtown. So, things over on 495 could stay open an hour later. And that's for liquor licenses in general, basically. And then for package stores, again, the real rate limiter here is, is state law, which prescribes certain hours that we have to let them be open. And so, I think by and large, Mr. Kamala, if I'm not mistaken, you basically proposed that we allow liquor stores to be open whatever the legal hours are.
Yes.
Okay. So, really no, no prohibition on that outside of what the state allows?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's talk about those two issues first and then we'll go through a list of specific questions that the town manager had. And Mr. Sestari, you're jumping back in. I, I think the idea here was to work off the town manager's memo. And, and he outlined three, three options, basically stick with what we got, make some specific changes or generally, or in general, basically identify two zones in town, a downtown district, Main Street, east Main Street, down Hayden Row, that have one set of hours. And then everything else outside those areas would have a separate set of hours, which would generally be somewhat later than, than those hours, like an hour. I think, I think he proposes to let them be open until midnight. And then for liquor stores, and I don't know if we have to have much discussion on this, I think the law, the idea is we just generally let liquor stores be open whatever hours state law allows. So, does any, how do we want to start this off? Does anybody have any comments on-
We take the easy one first then?
Yeah. So, let's talk about liquor stores. Does anybody have any desire to modify liquor store hours beyond that, what you're provided for in state law?
What are, what are those hours?
So, it's 8:00 to 11:00 AM, basically every day except for Sunday, which is 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
8:00 to 11:00 PM?
Yeah.
8:00 AM to 11:00?
8:00 AM to 11:00 PM is state, is state law Monday through Saturday, 11:30 PM on a day preceding a holiday. And then on Sundays, it's 10:00 AM, so opens two hours later on Sundays to 11:00 PM. However, the board of selectmen does have the right to prohibit the sale of alcohol beverages on Sunday by licensees. And then on holidays, the mass general laws, they have to be closed on Memorial Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, or the day following Christmas Day, when Christmas Day is a Sunday. So, that's state law. And the only real thing we could really modify there would be close liquor stores on Sundays if we chose.
So, we don't have anybody using that full, I'm sorry, can I go?
No, please.
We don't have anybody fully utilizing the hours prescribed by state law, that I'm aware of. No one's opening at 8:00 AM and going until 11:00 PM in town that I know of.
Nobody requested.
I've never been out to liquor store.
I don't know if anybody requested. I think-
Right. I don't think the market supports it and I don't think anyone's asked for that, right?
As far as I know. But I, I don't go to liquor stores on Sundays.
Could we say no to somebody if they wanted to stay open until 11?
I think the state law, you have to, I think you have to do what the state law says, right? I don't think, the only constriction you're allowed to apply to, so just to be clear, anybody now could apply for that and we couldn't deny it. They just, and this is part of the issue, right? Is they, they may apply for 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM, but, you know, that's what they want. But again, we have no basis to deny them if they want to open at 8:00 AM. Mr. Kamala, tell me if I'm right, because I'm making, right? I believe that to be the case. If a liquor, right?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. The only thing we can do is say liquor stores can't be open on Sundays.
I wouldn't do that.
So, if they want to be open at 10, they, right now, they apply for 10:00 AM, but we can't, you know, that's-
Patriots, Redskins?
Mr. Kamala.
The, the only other instance in which the board could regulate the hours of a package store is when there's a violation and it imposes hours-
Right. I'm assuming law-abiding owners. Right. Okay. So, is that, did that answer your question?
I'm good.
Does anybody else have any questions on liquor? We're trying to take the easy one first, liquor stores. Does anybody have any questions about liquor stores?
I don't have any other questions on liquor stores. It surprises me that we have to allow that state law as opposed to the state law being the loosest we can be. But if that's the case, then I guess we don't really, our, our hands are tied there. You know, I, I would be fine with supporting, closing them on Sundays if, if the board feels that low of support as well.
Right now, Mr. Kamala, we, we allow them generally to be open on Sundays, right? We don't have anybody close on Sundays?
Yeah, they, I'm looking at the, the database. Yes, we have allowed them to open on Sundays.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mosher, any thoughts about liquor stores?
No, I think I'd probably just stick-
open at 8:00 AM. Mr. Kamala, tell me if I'm right, because I make, right? I believe that to be the case. If a liquor, right?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. The only thing we can do is say liquor stores can't be open on Sundays.
I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
So if they want to be open at 10, they, right now, they apply for 10:00 AM, but we can't, you know?
That's Patriots, Redskins.
Mr. Kamala.
The, the only other instance in which the board could regulate the hours of a package store is when there's a violation.
Right, right. I'm assuming law-abiding owners. Right, okay. So is that, did that answer your question?
I'm good.
Does anybody else have any questions on, we're trying to take the easy one first, liquor stores. Does anybody have any questions about liquor stores?
I don't have any other questions on liquor stores. It surprises me that we have to allow that state law as opposed to the state law being the loosest we can be. But if that's the case, then I guess we don't really, our hands are tied there. You know, I, I would be fine with supporting, closing them on Sundays if, if the board feels that low of support as well.
Right now, Mr. Kamala, we allow them generally to be open on Sundays, right? We don't have anybody close on Sundays?
Yep. They, I'm looking at the, the database. Yes, we have allowed them to open on Sundays.
Mr. Moser, any thoughts about liquor stores?
No, I think I'd probably just stick with the current policy on liquor stores.
Okay. Mr. Kamala, can we review the current policy on liquor stores, which is, which is just basically, they have whatever hours they apply for, as long as they're within that window we approve?
Yes. I think, based on what I'm hearing from the board, unless the board agrees otherwise, we can craft a policy that basically outlines the hours as they are provided for by state law.
Any comments on that?
You know, I, I just don't see putting Hopkinton businesses under any more constraints than neighboring towns.
All right. So Ms. Kamala, I think that one, you got the idea from the board, which is, we can leave well enough alone on that one at the moment.
So the policy will be per state guidelines?
So does that mean regardless of the hours that a business applies for, we're going to cross it out and say 8:00 to 11:00 PM? Or?
Well, so I think as long as they're going to, again, liquor stores are kind of a really easy answer, because as long as they want to be within those hours, they can have it. I mean, it's essentially the law, right? So we don't, it doesn't really, almost doesn't matter. There's nothing to do about this.
But that's a good question.
But are they applying for specific hours?
So I think we're trying to draft a policy about what we will follow going forward when people apply for a license. Our policy will be for liquor stores that we will follow state guidelines and regulations. And if you're within those guidelines and regulations, we're not going to argue with whatever hours you apply for. But when you apply for your license, you get specific hours based on that license application. So as long as it's inside that window of 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, I think we would have to approve it if this is the policy we adopt. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So question, so question through the chair.
Yes.
Could have a business apply for hours beyond the state license, correct?
No, that's not, that's not allowed.
Would not be allowed.
Yeah, that's not, it's not allowed.
The board has no discretion.
So there's really nothing for us to do here.
The truth is, that, that's why I was trying to...
That's the easy one.
That's why I thought this would be the easy one, because there's really nothing for us to do except close liquor stores on Sunday, which I don't hear a great outcry for. So...
Other than, other than, you know, Mr. Cuttino had, you know, kind of the argument a couple of weeks ago regarding just enforcement. And if we approve everybody for the broadest amount of hours, broadest number of hours, then it's easier for the police to be able to go by and say, yeah, well, I know everybody's approved to be open till 11:00. So if I see the lights on at 10:15 or 10:30, I know that they're approved to be open, as opposed to saying, yeah, well, I know the state law is 11:00, but these guys only applied for 10:00, and I think they were approved for 10:00, so, you know?
But again, I don't think we can constrain their hours. I think this is one where we approve a license with certain hours, but it's extra legal. I don't think, I don't think we have the right to control their hours.
So, so through the chair, I'm sorry.
Let me just hold on. May this Mr. Cuttino, I mean, Ms. Sestari finish, and I'll come to you, I promise.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused then. Why are their hours put on the license?
That's my point. I'm not sure there's a reason for it. I'm not sure there's a rationale, because I don't know we, we're allowed to do it.
I think the hours still need to be on the license for specificity.
Really? But again, if, but they don't have to buy by them. If they put 10:00 in the license and they decide to open at 8:00, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it.
Because the board has no discretion.
That's what I'm saying.
For those hours.
Yeah. So they can put 10, they can put 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM in the license.
I'm not feeling like we know the whole story.
So, so, but again, we're, we're trying to craft a policy that when people apply for a license, they'll know what that policy is. So perhaps the policy should be, the Board of Selectmen would like, will follow state regulations with the intent and hope that we can have uniform hours across the community for all these stores. And then the license comes in, and we make the decision, hopefully encouraging them, they want to stay open until 10:30. Well, we really want to close everybody on 10:00. Can you live with 10:00? Right? We can't decide what each license is going to be in this discussion here. And we're not going to vote tonight anyway, because we're going to go back and...
Okay. So, Mr. Moser, I cut you off before.
Oh, so my, so my question was on, on Sundays, right? So we would have, we would still have discretion over Sundays, and then do we set hours within that Sunday?
Well, again, the hours are 10:00 to 11:00 unless the board votes to prohibit the sale of alcohol beverages on Sunday. So you can't, again, you can't change the hours, but you can just not let liquor be sold on Sundays.
Gotcha.
But I, Mr.?
Yeah. I swear, we, we have no more full liquor license package store licenses available until the next census. Unless there's that, then there's that, that whole process of going to the state, going to the town meeting and all that stuff. So...
Although I think, I think this proposal will change that law.
But we renew every year.
It will become a, it will become a moot point at some point. All right. So I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Kamala, is, you know, steady as she goes on the, on the liquor licenses on, for package stores.
To be clear, Mr. Sestari, the memo from Ray says, the board does not, the MGL does not authorize the board to regulate the hours of a package store licensee absent a violation. That's how clear it is.
Okay. So I guess, I guess I'd like to hear from town council regarding the hours that somebody applies for and show, shows up on the license. Okay, they're, they ask for hours that were, that are within MGL, but they're asking for something more restrictive than MGL. We approve it, and then they go back and they try to open outside what is on their license. I want to know what happens then.
Last town council.
We can ask a question, but I think I know the answer.
Yeah. We'll be ready for the public hearing.
What we did is invalid. We don't get to overlaw state, overstate law.
So is it, is it a state format where they're asking for their license, their liquor license request? Or is it a town format that is saying, tell us what the hours are that you want to be open? I'm just, it's, it's part curiosity, and, you know, I mean, I want to get, I want to get it right.
So why don't we get the answer? Rather than just bang this back and forth, let's get the answer from, from town council, and then we'll have the answer as part of the next, when we actually look to take action on this. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Because, you know, we're, none of us are specialists. All right. So that's where we stand, the package stores. All right. So now the, now the hard one. All right. So a couple of questions. First of all, do people buy into the idea of having a multi-tier system? Well, so here's, here's what the proposal is. Two-tier system, downtown, again, Main Street, East Main Street, Hayden Row. That's the proposal for the core. And then, then the second idea would be everything outside of that. So, and then the second thing would be, again, there's hours, which, Mr. Kamala, fit within the current hours generally of opening, although they do, they are somewhat earlier than some places currently close, right?
Yes.
Although that can be dealt with through a grandfathering, I guess, if we chose. But the question is, in general, do we buy into a multi-tier system, and do we, and what do people think about the hours? Ms. Kamala's wrong.
No, I think you're absolutely correct. The, the grandfathering concept could work in the following way, where as part of the policy discussion, the board decides the length of the grandfathering, and also then take advantage of the annual renewals to evaluate the establishments that would have been grandfathered.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. My links aren't working on here. Could you just tell me what the, what the proposal was?
Yeah. We do that. So what it was, yeah, I had to open the, I had to open it to the index myself. Town manager came forward with three choices for how to deal with the liquor licenses, essentially, of restaurants. And it's keep it as it is, which is basically, we just sort of do each of these randomly, maybe address, maybe make some modifications to address some specific areas of concern, for example, late nights near residences or that kind of thing. Or third, just generally, and I think this is where we tried to go before, just have a, acknowledge that there's different locations in town can have different hours. The proposal from the town manager was two areas, what he calls a downtown core, and then an outside of that. With the idea of being a downtown core, those restaurants are going to be generally in closer proximity to residences, so they'd be able to open, in all cases, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And then for all other areas, which would, which would be outside that, which is primarily 495, they'd be able to open from 11:00 AM till midnight. Again, we can talk about the grandfathering of some later places, because some licensing through grand go to 1:00 AM, but that was the general concept. Mr. Moser, you want, do you have any thoughts on this as an idea?
I think for the, for the poor, for the poor licenses, I'm sorry, for the package stores, I don't really see...
We're done with package stores. We're just, you're just, we're just doing just...
Gotcha. We're just doing the top two.
Core and Vicshaw.
So the rationale in the downtown was just, just kind of a noise factor and the population density around those establishments?
Yes. And also, I should say with the board, I did have some preliminary conversations with representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. I think we're all in agreement that, to some extent, the downtown is still considered somewhat of a semi-residential area.
I think it's reasonable.
Okay. Mr. Cuttino?
Well, again, I'm going to say what I did before. I don't think that we should constrain, you know, we're trying to encourage restaurants to come downtown. And, you know, there's one going to be built right next door. You know, and then, you know, when we, when you think of, you know, there's the, the restaurant down 85 that's been there forever, that's, that's in a residential neighborhood, but it's outside of downtown. So we do have aspects of, of residences near other establishments too. So, you know, I, I just believe that always level the playing field. I don't want to put people, businesses downtown in the, and, and, I know it's only, some people say it's only an hour, and they, and they're probably going to close early anyway. However, if we're, you know, we just allowed several 1:00 o'clocks all across the board, that we should, you know, make them all 12, make them all 1:00, but everybody plays by the same rules.
Okay. Mr. Hurd?
I'm not sure how I feel about the two zones. I'd be interested in hearing from the chief what his thoughts are on that before I weigh in.
Did you get the concept, Chief? I know we kind of dropped this on you cold. Did you?
Yeah. I think the most important thing is that, you know, is that, not a lot of confusion. The officers are on patrol. Not that we have a lot of establishments that could be a problem in the future and not knowing who's fair on the floor. But I, I think narrowing it down to like the downtown area and the outside area, that certainly wouldn't be as confusing.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Kamala?
Yeah, I think, and I appreciate his feedback and input. I think there are residences, lots of residences, residents in downtown Hopkinton. And there are lots of residents everywhere else, too. I mean, South Street may not have a lot of residents on South Street itself, but there's neighborhoods right off South Street. You know, the intersection at Lumber Street now is obviously getting built up, but there's residents right off there. And I, I think we have to be fair and equitable across the community. So I'd probably, you know, keeping it simple and being consistent, you know, with all the residents, I'd probably advocate for a single policy for a, in a single time slot for everybody.
Okay. Ms. Sestari?
Yeah. You know, this is, this is one I can, I can talk myself onto both sides. But, you know, I agree. I think that, on the one hand, you know, being fair to the business owners, you know, giving everybody a fair shake. At the same time, you know, if we talk to the current business owners in the downtown area, if, if they don't feel that this is a hardship for them, then all the future business owners, as they come in, they know, they know what the deck of cards looks like, and they know what the rules are before they decide to open up a business here. And I do understand that, that the population density that's immediately in the vicinity of the businesses, there's, there's a greater density in downtown versus, versus out on South Street. You know, that said, for, for ease of policing and things of that nature. And, you know, if we, if we choose to just be equitable, equitable across the board, you know, I can see, I can see just having one rule for all. You know, certainly when things start opening up in any commercial zones out around legacy farms and, you know, that type of thing, I think that some of them are going to want to stay open a little bit later as well. So then we're going to have another, you know, difficult decision, which I think by this policy, that would be an 11:00, right?
Yes.
Out there. So, you know, that's something that we would end up more than likely having to revisit, I would think. So...
I will say that I don't, I believe that downtown has such a number of folks that live here. I think we have to be courteous to them. And so I, I don't believe that having late night establishments, I mean, if this wasn't such a residential area, residentially intensive area, I would feel less concerned about it. In fact, I might even feel like you could keep it open later to have more people come to the downtown. I will say frankly, I do not want to infringe upon those people and reduce their quality of life. And I don't think that these hours are a lot shorter than most, than any resident, in fact, these hours are longer, I think, than anybody has nowadays. Maybe the Thai restaurant is open later. But I, I, I think the, the challenge of this is always, how do you provide services without damaging residents who are nearby? And I guess I'd, on this one, I'd probably lean towards being more considered of the local residents in the downtown area. So if we want to modify the downtown, if we want to modify the downtown district, I'd probably be more in favor of that. But I personally would err in this case on the side of having things get quieter for people to live here somewhat earlier.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I look at, I look at some other downtowns that they may be more, more, you know, in restaurant intensive, you know, where you can walk from one restaurant to another, and if they're both, they both have waiting lists, then you can go to a third, fourth, fifth, sixth options. You know, we don't, we don't have that downtown. So, you know, I think, I think, I kind of lean toward that point as well. Just the, the residential density downtown is, is such that I think at least at this time, we should, we should make sure that we're respecting the peace and quiet.
So you're advocating for two zones, then?
I think I am, yeah, yeah.
I mean, now that you mention it, I didn't really think of it in those terms. Probably, I could be persuaded.
Where do we draw the line?
So through, through the chair. So right now, I mean, what do we have downtown? We have Pantai, right? And we have Bills.
Bills.
Bills is closing at 10:00. Pantai is 11:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, midnight, Friday and Saturday. And we could just, I mean, that seems...
Then we have the new one going to be opening.
New one? Yeah. That's still 1:00 AM, right? No, that's the One Ten Grill.
Yeah, that's...
But the market is dictating these guys are closing much earlier in those hours right there.
I don't deny that.
We walk out here tonight at 10:00 o'clock.
So what if, so what if we just did a blanket Monday through Thursday, 11:00, Friday to Saturday, midnight?
In a downtown area or in town generally?
Just in town generally.
I mean, I'd be okay with that. I don't know, I...
I mean, that's, that makes it fair across the board. It, you know, I think the earlier, the 11:00 PM during the week kind of buffers the downtown a little. It seems to be working well there now.
So only just to, just for, just to kind of knock this one around a little bit, I think the only comment I'd make is, and this is just, this is just a question, is, do we want, and I think this is where Mr. Cuttino's going to go, I'm going to go to him, because I promised I would. Do we want to start to encourage more, or allow at least, more restaurants outside, like in these less intensive areas, where One Ten Grill will be, that all kind of things to open? Now again, One Ten Grill backs up on an apartment complex or will. So I'd actually be okay with not having them be open so late either, because again, coming back to infringing upon people's lives, right?
I mean, to Mr. Hurd's point, there's, there's homes all over the place.
There are.
And that's kind of just the way it is now.
Made us not be a super late night town. I, I don't know that I feel a need for anybody to be open at 1:00 AM in any kind of residential area or near residential.
Didn't we do the One Ten Grill and say we're okay with you guys doing that?
Yes.
With entertainment?
But the entertainment's done at 10:00. Entertainment's done early.
Let me go to Mr. Cuttino, because I promised I wouldn't. I haven't.
You know, bylaws are, are put in place to either encourage or discourage. And by, by us not being restaurateurs or, or people that, that are in that business, and trying to say, you know, put restrictions on the hours when the markets can do that themselves. You know, and if, and especially to the point, there was made, well, Monday through Thursday, this, and then Friday we'll go to this, and Saturday's this, and then Sunday, because it's a day of rest, maybe we should only go to here, or something. We're, we're now writing these, writing the business plans for these, for these businesses that we're trying to encourage to come to town. And we sending out a message, okay, come to town, but we're going to restrict you if you're going to be here, or there, or someplace else, when, to Mr. Hurd's point, we have, we have homes just about everywhere. Yes, there's, there's more of a concentration downtown at this point, but then there will be a concentration near, near the Lumber Street stuff. There are, there are homes right around where Price Dropper is, and, and there are homes up by, up by the north by, up by the North Pond House and everything else. So that's why, again, I think that we should make something across the board, make it, make it even for everybody, and then let the market dictate it to some extent. We can always pull back if, if something starts to go crazy. But, you know, as we leave, again, as we leave here, and we have a late meeting, a late, that goes past 9:00, there really is nothing open downtown. There's, you know, we actually have to run to the edge of town to find anything. And maybe we could encourage more businesses downtown. To the chief's point, the last time we were talking about the Thai restaurants staying open until 10:00, well, we could have more eyes on the street. You know, it's, not everybody that's walking on the street is a perp. The, the people that are on the street are eyes for the police, and they're actually doing the policeman's job, and this, you know, to have more activity in the downtown will encourage, but it's, it's more there, there, as was mentioned before.
So again, so I think the issue here may be somewhat philosophical. I view businesses as being in town to support the needs of the residents, not in of themselves, right? I only want businesses in town because I want the people in town to have a lifestyle that people in town want. So I, I, this doesn't mean, in my opinion, that we just let everybody kind of do what's best for them, right? I mean, and, and for me, it's less, I mean, or it's not crime, it's noise, it's just a hassle factor, it's cars coming in and out, it's, right, it's headlights, it's all that kind of stuff. So I'm, I, I want businesses to exist in town to serve the needs of the town. I think we have an undeniable, an absolute right to control their businesses, because what, it is not always clear that what their objectives are and what the town's objectives are will align. That's why we're here, is to try to make sure that everything is done for the benefit of the residents overall, right? So, so I think, so I think, you know, that, I mean, I come at this maybe a slightly different angle. I, I, nobody's saying we don't want them here, John, but I think we're, but I think, again, from my view, they're here only for one reason, which is to benefit our residents. And so for me, it's always a trade-off between letting my fundamental let people do what they want concepts, right? To your point, let the market sort itself out, but also the fact, recognition that, again, in a resident-heavy area, you have to be cognizant of the fact that your, every minute they operate is infringing at some level upon residents' lives. And the question is, where is that, where does that trade-off no longer work? And that's what I, that's what I'm concerned about. So I don't think that, I could be fine with a blanket policy, I'm not sure an hour matters either way. I do think, though, we have to fundamentally be very concerned about making sure that we're, we're not impairing our residents' quality of life excessively as one primer consideration. Yes, back to you.
Yeah, if I made, the third point, you know, if you notice that many of the properties adjacent to downtown are going up at a much higher rate than some of the properties outside of the downtown because of the, of the relative.
Because our building.
Yeah, ease of getting these amenities. And so inasmuch as you might be saying we're protecting the people by closing it, maybe, maybe it makes it easier for them to just walk down the street or walk a couple blocks in order to go to a restaurant or get something to eat or get something to drink. So, you know, as much as we may be saying we're protecting, we're protecting you from yourself, may not be the.
Well, again, it's not, it's not as, it's not as patriarchal as that. It's basically saying that at some point, there's a trade-off between the benefit of being open an extra hour till 12:30 in the morning and the burden on all the people that live nearby that have the cars coming in and out, the people going by, and the loud folks exiting and all the other stuff at 12:30 in the morning, right? And so, so that, and I'm not saying picking 12:30 is a certain time, I'm just saying that, that even in your example, you have to acknowledge that there's some level of diminishing return, right? Fewer and fewer people, as you get later and later in the night, are gonna need those services. And the, the impact upon people who live nearby is going to escalate over the course of the night until a certain hour. And what I'm trying, what I personally am concerned about is where do I, where do those curves cross? And where are we now, in a holistic sense, damaging the public good more than we're enhancing the public good with extra time open? Again, there's, there's no straight, there is no simple answer. But that's, that's why I view the downtown as different, because I believe that, again, given the resident-intensive nature of the downtown, it is, there's more likely to be an earlier time at which those curves cross than there is on South Street, or even to some extent on that part of Lumber Street, the intersection. So how do we want to handle this, because we're running way long? Do we, do people want to look, do we want to explore two solutions? Do people want to go with one solution? I think we're all kind of, I'm not sure where we are, actually. I'm not sure there's a consensus anywhere.
I, I like John's idea, I like John Mosher's idea. I'm curious what we're thinking we would do with the license that we already approved.
Yeah. As a follow-up, we, obviously, we can grandfather anything we want. And that was one of the follow-on questions, as to would we want to grandfather things? So.
For one year or?
As long as we see fit. Mr. Kamalo, if somebody rejects?
Just a question. Mr. Mosher, looking at my notes, you mentioned the hours from Monday to Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday.
No, Monday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Right, yeah, I meant Friday, Saturday.
What about Sunday? What happens on Sunday?
I don't know, I didn't mention that. I think they would probably divert to the weekday time.
Yeah, I think, I think it's probably Sunday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Sunday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Yeah.
Okay. So this would be a one, no multiple zones, just across town?
Right, so you have a weekday time and a weekend time.
Okay, how do people feel about that?
So Pantai, Pantai, which is downtown right now, closes at 11.
Well, the license allows them to be open until.
Right, until 11:00. No, I'm sorry. Monday to Thursday, 11:00, yeah, Friday to Saturday, midnight. Sunday is 10:00. But we could, we could make Sunday 11:00 just to be consistent with Monday through Thursday. So Monday through, Sunday through Thursday would be 11:00, Friday, Friday and Saturday would be midnight.
I can look at that. And that's 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, basically?
I did not look at the opening hours, I just went by the closing hours for that one.
But if I may, through the chair, by going, now, that's a 30-seat, a 26, 30-seat restaurant to have them guide it when we're trying to encourage a restaurant to move in next door that's gonna be, that's gonna be larger, and then Bills that's trying to expand to compete with 110 and, and Quattro and compete against, you know, everything else that's coming to the other side of town.
So through the chair, we just make it all one, all the same time?
Right. He's saying one time across town, 11:00 PM and midnight.
So there'd be no advantage time-wise.
But again, we're also competing with outside of town, too.
Well, but, okay, but at some level, we're competing with Connecticut, so.
No.
We don't want to create an atmosphere where we're gonna have people going on pub crawls either.
Yeah, right. I mean, this is a residential community.
You know, this isn't Newport, Rhode Island, where I love to go, by the way, but this is not Newport, Rhode Island, so.
Right.
These are these people that eat after 11:00 and drink on Sundays. They're not eating. Not that I've ever been there, but they're not eating.
But, but his, but a company just came in town, and we said that they should, they could stay open to 1:00, and they bit both their business plan to 1:00.
That's the biggest, the biggest issue I have in, in the execution, not in the theory, is that we've approved these guys for 1:00. We can say we're gonna grandfather them, but if we do that, then I pretty much feel an obligation that anybody else who comes in and says, well, you know, I want 1:00, too, just so I can compete with these guys, they're gonna have a tough time saying no.
You were the one who wanted this policy in the first place. You're the one who wanted all this.
No, I think that, I think that.
Well, they can stay open to 1, they can have a license to 1:00, all the power to them, but no one's gonna be there at 12:00.
Right, exactly, but, you know, we should, I don't know, you know, even, you know, I just, I just feel as though the people write their business plans up, and then to take, tend to take two hours away from them.
Well, their business plan was written.
It wasn't 1:00 on the weeknights.
That's not true.
Their business plan was written up before they came to us.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
Asking us for the permit, but.
Okay. Can I, can we, all right, so you don't, you don't go with 11:00 PM on weeknights and Friday, Saturday, midnight? Do you have, you do, Mr. Mosher does.
I go, I go for midnight across the board all the time, because I think that's only an hour.
I'm not gonna do that.
What do you, where are you? Are you good with 11:00 PM Monday through Thursday, Sunday through Thursday?
Sunday through Thursday, I'm good with 11:00 PM close. Friday, Saturday, I'm good with 12:00 o'clock close. If we've got one where we went to 1:00, then we gotta sort through that. But in general, long-term policy, I think, you know, I think 12:00, most people in Hopington are asleep for three hours by then, so.
But there's more than, there's more than one.
Okay, but you're in a, you're.
I, I agree. I can go with, I can go with Sunday through Thursday to 11:00, and then Friday, Saturday to 12:00. You know, I don't know if we put in, you know, write in little exceptions for holiday weekends or, you know, something like that. So if it's Memorial Day weekend, you can stay open late on Sunday night, or, yeah.
Well, that's a refinement.
But that's details, yeah.
So again, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna vote this tonight, because we can't. But I mean, I think, and I, with full acknowledgement of the fact, you disagree vehemently, and I, and it's, but I just want to try to move this along. I think the consensus, Mr. Kamalo, is you'd have the board comfortable with Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 PM, Friday, Saturday for midnight. The 1:00 AM license is all set for now, anyway, right? So it's already been approved for this year, and I think we'd revisit that.
Can we go ahead and reach out to Mr. Walker and see what his thoughts are on that? We know him.
Can I ask one more question to the chair, to Mr. Kamalo?
Please.
How many, there's more than one that's at 1:00, though. We say, we make it sound like there's one.
Co's is 1:00 AM, Dynasty is 1:00 AM, and Cornell's is 1:00 AM.
And there's one more.
What's the one more?
110 Grill.
What we were just talking about.
So over on 495, it's basically 1:00 AM.
What's Cornell's?
1:00 AM.
1:00 AM.
But again, the board could always say, I mean, here's a point, those are outside the downtown area. I mean, I'm, I'm not going for anything at 1:00 AM inside, in downtown, ever, so.
So then you're advocating for two zones?
Well, in essence, or I'm just saying, maybe at 495, you sort of, I mean, again, there's nothing saying we can't do these exclusions over time. And if we say 495 is, to your point, if we say 495, everyone's got 1:00 AM to do something, either everyone's gotta close at midnight, so pull them all back an hour, or is a general rule, we'll, we'll let everyone else that comes in there just have 1:00 AM, that's fine. I'm just never going for 1:00 AM in the downtown district, period.
Okay, okay.
So through the chair, maybe Mr. Kamalo could find out if these establishments are actually serving between midnight and 1:00 AM.
Okay.
Yeah, we should call those folks.
For now, why don't we draft midnight, but acknowledging that those people have valid liquor licenses till 1:00 AM, and we'll figure that, we'll figure this out in the second pass. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. And any other highlights we need to address, Mr. Kamalo? So we talked a little about grandfathering, we talked about changing hours, we already talked about those two things. May the hours be adjusted by licensing authority if it shall be determined that circumstances warrant further alteration, I think that's for sure. The board's always gonna want to keep its prerogatives, right? May the licensing require that new alcoholic beverages be sold 15 minutes before the hour stayed in the license, so which service of alcoholic beverages must cease. Do we want last call 15 minutes early?
Yeah.
Any good bartender does that, so.
So 15 minutes early last call, Mr. Kamalo. Do we always want to have a manager or assistant manager on duty and on the premises?
Yep.
Yes, okay, good, good. Okay, so consensus is yes. May the licensing authority require the licensee serve alcoholic beverages only to customers who intend to dine on the licensed premises, and that menus reflect the requirement that wine and malt beverages and all alcoholic beverages may be ordered in conjunction with consumption of a meal ordered from the menu on the licensed premises, and that manager take reasonable measures to ensure the patrons who are, do we live in Utah? I don't know that I sense that there's.
No, no, I answered.
I sense there'd be no interest in that, Mr. Kamalo. Is it, am I, do I sense properly?
This is on the meal thing?
You have to get a meal? This is the Utah.
Oh, it'd be good for downtown businesses, right? It'd be good for other businesses, if you're going to get a drink.
I think that's the rule.
Utah rule.
Well, it is, that's a rule in Utah, you have to get food. So, may the licensing authority.
Start issuing Unicards, too.
May the licensing authority prohibit the manager, assistant manager, or employee of the licensee from consuming any alcoholic beverages or illegal drugs while on duty, except tasting wine to be served to patients? That doesn't sound like a very hard one to figure out. Anybody want to let managers take drugs or drink when they're on duty? Okay, seeing no consensus for that, Mr. Kamalo will stick with the firm no on that one. May the licensing authority require the manager, assistant manager, and bartender to successfully complete an alcohol beverage server training program, satisfied with the time prior to their appointment.
Yep, yes.
And that all of the employees that serve alcoholic beverages use the house training similar to that completed by the manager, assistant manager, and bartender. You have the most experience as a bartender, is that the rule, anyway?
Yeah, in order to get insurance, you have to have.
Okay, so let's make that, let's put that in the bylaws, but acknowledging that's kind of the way it is, anyway. Not the bylaws, in the, in the regulations.
The regulation.
Okay, so can, with that, can we go off, draft a new policy, and then we'll post a public hearing, and we'll finalize it? Actually, we'll probably take one more pass-through. Why don't we see it again, take one more pass-through to solve these throwing 1:00 AM issues and stuff like that with a little bit of data, and then we'll.
With some outreach to those current 1:00 AM.
Following outreach to the 1:00 AMers.
Including Mr. Walker.
Let's see if we figure the 1:00 AM thing out first. Rather than do that in the public hearing, I'd rather have some consensus on 1:00 AM before we get going. I don't want anyone to get too excited.
We can, we can arrange a meeting with all the affected parties.
My goal is that this is sort of a non-event for people when it comes forward, right? We're not, I don't want to get excited. Okay. Do you have enough, Mr. Kamalo, to go forward on that?
I believe so.
Okay, good. Anyone in the board have any other questions, direction, thoughts that we need to pass along? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to item seven on the agenda, annual time meeting calendar. It's a discussion item, the board will review the annual time meeting calendar. Mr. Kamalo, over to you.
Yes, we shared with you this evening the complete calendar, and I would like to draw your attention to the following key dates. Notice, too, that in the past, the board has asked that we provide this calendar together with the regularly scheduled meetings for the board. Those are shown in red in your handout. Key dates, let's start off with February 2nd, 2016, where the selectmen opened the annual town meeting warrant. And also moving on, February 23rd, town manager submits the comprehensive draft budget for review by the selectmen. And then March 1st, we are tentatively scheduling the working session between the board and department heads to go through the budget. March 3rd, the warrant closes. Again, the warrant opened February 2nd, and it closes, as I just said, March 3rd. That gives people approximately a month to work on the warrant articles. I also pointed out, March 11th, 2016, thanks to Brenda, she pointed out that this is the last day for Board of Selectmen to accept resignations of elected officials in order for the position to be placed on the annual term election ballot. March 15th, the Board of Selectmen adopt a budget and submit it to the appropriations committee.
Is that the date of a normal meeting, Mr. Kamalo?
Yes.
Okay.
Though we, we may, the board may consider, the board may consider scheduling that all boards meeting prior to that date, so that at least March 15th is the final chance for the board to finalize its recommendation.
Right, because we're not, we're not submitting it after that, so we, we need to make sure that that budget's done, whatever takes that night.
Can we back up a second, Mr. Chair? If we're, if our last day to accept Board of Selectmen to accept resignations of elected officials for positions to be placed on annual town election is March 11th, really, the last meeting that we have scheduled is March 1st for us to vote to accept those resignations, correct? So it would really have to be March 1st, technically, or.
Or we have an emergency meeting.
In effect, right? You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Uh, well, no, if somebody resigns, we'll just have, have to hold an emergency meeting. They sign, if they resign on 11th, we're just gonna have to...
Well, if we don't have an emergency meeting, then there'll be a special election following the general election.
I, I, I agree. Right, the desired, I really think the desired last date is the 1st, but the legal date is the 11th, so we'll just have to...
Right. So if someone wants to resign in an elected position in Hopkinton, they wanna try and do that before March 1st, so we can accept it...
Correct.
On March 1st.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay, April 5th, 2016, the Board of Selectmen begins to take positions on articles, and at that point, we're hoping to have the draft motions available for the board. April 11th is the final date for submitting any ballot questions to the town clerk's office. We have also tentatively marked April 12th to the 21st as the window within which the board can schedule an emergency meeting to sign the final annual town, annual town meeting warrant.
Now, that's gonna run into school vacation weeks, we gotta be careful there.
Okay.
I think that's, I think the 16th is Patriots' Day, right, Marathon Day? So we've gotta be careful, we may lose people that week.
April 18th.
18th is Patriots' Day? Okay.
And then, um, April 22nd, very important day for the town clerk's office, combined election and town warrant posted on this day, eight days before annual town meeting. And then, uh, May 2nd, annual town meeting begins.
Questions?
Any questions, starting with Mr. Herr?
No, I think I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sestari?
I guess my biggest concern here is that we're not getting a draft budget until February 23rd. So what I anticipate is that we'll get that budget when we're at the meeting. We won't really have a big opportunity to review it in detail, to come into the meeting with questions. Then we meet once on March 1st to ask questions, possibly make some recommendations, um, you know, for, for goals to try to reach. And then the next meeting, we have to accept it and pass it on to appropriations. I, I seem to recall that, you know, I'm just gonna say, five or six years ago, anyway, we used to have more iterations of the process and see more versions of the budget, uh, as we were working up toward the, the final that we accepted. And it seems like it's been in the past two to three years that we've started pinching that down and not seeing as many versions, and not, I guess, you know, getting to, getting to help mold it and, and, you know, fine-tune it as we get to that date. And so that's, that's, I guess, my biggest concern here.
Through the chair, I agree, I agree with Mr. Sestari. I see the school committee is submitting their budget by February 1st. It'd be nice to start to get a sense of the whole thing, give a little more time to, to work through it than what's in the schedule right now.
See, the problem with that is February is a school vacation week, which is what pushes that meeting up to the 23rd. So the only way to do it, I'm sorry, not to, just to finish the thought, I don't know that we could do it before then, so the truth is, what we'd end up having to do if, if we really wanna do this, would be push, add another me, I think, we, the only way to do this would be to add another meeting in, either at the end of February or in early March, because I don't know if we can get it done in front of...
And the early, the early March one isn't a bad idea. You know, we've got one on March 1st. If we have another one on March 8th, that's closer than the, closer to the March 11th deadline for people to make resignations. Not that that's happened in the past, um, but it at least starts to coincide with that and gives us one more look. Just a thought.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, since, since we take the, the heat for, for the taxes and the budget and everything else, I'd, I'd like some more time to talk about it, rather than, um, having to argue at the last second.
So why don't we pencil in this Camallo meeting on the 8th? You know, we'll kind of, we'll see how it goes, but that'd give us the 23rd, the 1st, the 8th, and then the 15th, we'd finalize it. So basically, every week, which is probably about right.
And free cash is already done for, for this.
Is that finished?
So we'll have a better, a little better sense of what's going on going in.
Why is that an issue?
No.
Does that make sense to you, Mr. Camallo? Unless you think there's a way you can do it earlier, but I don't think you can, I mean, I honestly, you only, you'd have to get all in the 9th, and then, and then, the truth is, we're gonna end up having a meeting again in March, probably anyway. You might as well just plan on it.
I mean, on the one hand, I'd love to, before we even go on vacation, you know, the February break, I'd, I'd love to see a straw man. But on the other hand, I also know that I always start to panic when I see that, so...
This is an interesting topic, because, um, the big gorilla in the room, I think, is March 3rd.
I'm sorry?
The warrant.
The big issue that we face in terms of finalizing the budget is that, um, the warrant's still open until March 3rd.
But that's not the operating budget, though. Those all sit outside, right? So there's, there's nothing that's gonna affect the operating, well, okay, there, it could be, it's plausible, but unlikely that, that stuff is gonna hit the operating budget.
Not a big issue, but overall, remember, it, the, the process formulating the budget really requires our office to have all the components of the budget.
Revisions, we get closer. But that'll give us one more chance to get one more pass-through of revision. And by then, to your point, Mr. Camallo, we'll have a really good sense of what the whole warrant's gonna look like and all the expenses attached to it. Not, again, not that I think that would affect the operating budget. Mr. Herr?
Not so much calendar-specific, but budget-related. Through the chair, have you had an opportunity to get with Dr. McLeod and just sort of sit down for half an hour and go through sort of where you are and where she is and where, where we're headed collectively?
Not at this point.
Is that, is there plans to do that?
Yes.
Outside this schedule here?
Yes.
Yeah. They did their budget meeting last week, uh, about two weeks ago.
Yeah, so we've been those, a couple of those, several of them.
I went to one you guys missed, yeah. I went to one you guys missed.
And, um, I like what they're doing this year. I, there's, they're, I think, bottom-up doing a good job, but we still need to sit and understand it in detail.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the calendar? Mr. Camallo, you, any comments from you on the calendar, thoughts, or, are you good with the March 8th concept?
Yeah, I'm good with the March 8th concept. And also, I mean, budget season is budget season. If, if there are issues that come up before the, the 23rd, that I believe, or feel that the board's input is needed, I'll ask the board to meet before March, you know, February 23rd.
Okay. Even if all of us can't do it, some of us will probably be around, but so we'll, we'll have something at least.
Last question, if I could.
Please.
So we appointed Brendan to be the town clerk between now and election day.
She's acting, yeah.
Acting town clerk, correct. There's no, that doesn't impact anything in here, but that's just an open position...
She is town clerk, yeah.
That would then be filled at the annual town election.
Jerry's term is up anyway, and so was, it's gonna be, was up for election anyway? Yes.
Correct.
She, and by the way, she's not the acting town clerk, she's the town clerk.
The town clerk, yeah.
Okay. Questions? All right, we're good on that. Liaison reports, Mr. Cutino.
Yeah, I went to, uh, the chief's retirement party on, on Friday. It was a well-attended affair, even though it took place right in the middle of the Patriots' game. I mean, the Portuguese club was packed, um, the chief got a lot of recognition, a lot of retirement gifts. Um, a, a good time was had by all, but it was, it was a really great event, well-attended.
Mr. Sestari?
We had our first meeting for the charter review committee last week, and it was primarily an organizational meeting, but we did elect a chair, a vice chair, and we're going to work on, uh, electing a, um, uh, what's the right term? Not a secretary, but...
Yeah.
Clerk, huh?
Yeah. Big clerk.
Clerk, thank you, at the, at the next meeting. Uh, but Pam Waxlax is our chair, and, um, so, uh, you know, that's, that's a, a good thing. And we are planning on taking this thing on, you know, we, we started looking at options for calendar, and, you know, one of the options is trying to get this done so that we can get things approved at town meeting, annual town meeting. Um, that was incredibly aggressive. Uh, so then we started talking about having a special town meeting within annual town meeting, 'cause basically that gives us a little bit more time to, to actually come up with the articles. Uh, but that's still incredibly aggressive. So what we're probably looking at is requesting a special town meeting at some point, either in the fall or next winter. Um, in the end, wh, whenever it happens, uh, at the next annual town election, uh, there needs to be, you know, some ballots pertaining to the changes anyway. So even if we did it at the annual town meeting this year, it'd be another year before people actually vote on the changes, and so there might be a little bit too much of a disconnect in that regard. Um, but anyway, you know, the, the basics of understanding what we need to accomplish are there, we discussed those. Uh, we're planning on having, uh, you know, several, uh, I guess, public, not public meetings, because all the meetings are public, but, uh, public sessions, information sessions, really gathering input from people, uh, along the way, and, uh, everybody's excited about it, so...
If I may add?
Mr. Camallo?
I, I thought the first meeting was, was, um, very interesting. Uh, the committee members showed, uh, deep interest in the topics. Uh, the quality of discussion was very, um, very good. Uh, and I think the, the officers that we elected, I think, will, will carry this process forward successfully.
I, I, yeah, I should note, uh, I, I mentioned the chair, the vice chair is Michelle Murdock. And, um, yeah, of course, you know, we started discussing the schedule for meetings, and you've got a school committee member who can't make it on Thursdays, got a selectman can't make it on Tuesdays, you have appropriations that can't make it on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Sunday morning.
So it's a good thing that, uh, we're not trying for annual town meeting, and we're gonna stretch it out a bit, so...
Mr. Herr?
Uh, before I get into one quick update, if I could state the obvious, you know, we have lots of different liaison assignments, and we have lots of other things that we do specific to our activities here in Hopkinton. So I would just sort of put the message out again to those committees where I am assigned, if you're interested in me attending, please let me know. I don't seek out additional meetings in my life in town, 'cause I have a full slate as it is, but if somebody needs me to attend, or they're concerned about something going on in town, if they reach out to me, I will be happy to get back to them. I think there's a perception sometimes that we just are gonna go to everything, and I don't think that, uh, is a, a fair representation of what we can and should do as liaisons to these various committees. Uh, so that said, I'm happy to go to anything, but let me know. Um, the Pratt Farm Team Committee is meeting again next week, and just as an FYI at this point, and I'm not convinced it's necessarily within our purview, but there are some concerns about the beaver dams in the area and floodwaters, et cetera, encroaching on, uh, a couple of neighborhoods, or one neighborhood in particular, Huckleberry Road. So while, again, it may not be our purview, we did put them on the agenda to come in and share their concerns. Uh, I think that's probably gonna come to the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, and others in town to really address. Uh, but, um, I'll keep you posted on that, but we have our next meeting on next Thursday, I believe it is. And I did not get a chance to go to the school committee budget presentation after they did the individual budgets, but I assume you're gonna help bring us up to speed on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Murdock?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You did go to the fire chief's retirement on Saturday.
I did, yes. Very...
You had two people there?
Two attendees there.
Yep.
Excellent.
Very enjoyable, wonderful event, absolutely packed. Uh, Mr. Cutino had some kind words to say to the chief. Um, I was particularly struck by one gentleman who came up from Pennsylvania, and he is overseeing, uh, at one point, up to 3,000 firefighters at, at a time, and he does advisements to different departments, including our government, um, on various aspects of safety around public events. He spoke extremely highly of the training and preparedness of our department, and of, uh, both Chief Clark and, uh, interim Chief Slayman, and particularly of the organization and preparation with other agencies for the marathon. So that was, that was nice to see some, not, not only the incredible support from members of the department there for Chief Clark and many people in town, but also to have somebody compelled to come all the way from out of state to see Chief Clark off in retirement. And, uh, and Patriots won, too, so it was a great evening all the way around.
Was there a big TV going?
There was, but it was in the back, so people paid, paid attention to Chief. There was, there was a, a video that, um, captured the chief's career, and, um, if, from the looks of it, all he did was fight fires and have kids and ride motorcycles. So it looked like, it looked like a pretty good career. Um, but, but it was particularly moving, and, um, it really showed the care and attention that the department had for their, for their chief in putting that together. So it was really a, a wonderful event.
Okay. Uh, so from a liaison perspective, I did go to the school committee budget hearing 10 days ago now, right? You, you both go to all of them. That was the one you were conflicted for, so I went. Uh, the school committee's superintendent budget is up roughly 4.5% year over year. It's about $1.7 million in total. Um, when I said it, it seemed like they were closing in on the number. Still some things to be done, obviously. The vast majority of it, no surprises, contractual increases. Um, uh, there was a lot of discussion around fees and how they wanna have that from a policy perspective, in terms of who pays them and, and for what. And so I think there was a lot of discussion around that, but I didn't, there was no decisions made when I was there. So it's a, well, it's a reasonably large number, but it's sort of in line with what they historically do. They always come in somewhere in that vicinity, to my recollection. So, um, so I'm sure you all will be able to go to the next one, and we'll get more of an update. But like I said, the number as of, as of then was $1.7 million. Um, just in terms of how we're gonna change this agenda going forward, I think we've heard from some folks in the community, and I think we've been sort of frustrated ourselves with, um, maybe some of the perceptions out there about our, um, uh, activity level in some of these events. So what I've asked Mr. Camallo to do, and we'll pick this up at the next meeting going forward, is we're going to actually change this agenda item to be liaison reports and community events or something. Remember, when I, I don't know, when I first got here, when we first started, we, we used to get invitations to things, and we'd sort of find out about them, and I think that's sort of has fallen off. And I don't know if just, we don't get invited to things anymore, or what's happening, but what we're gonna do as part of this is start tracking invitations that come into the town manager's office for selectmen to go to events specifically, and then we will, at least all of us will be aware of them, and I think to the extent we can, we'll try to allocate those out, um, so that folks can go to things that people deem important enough to invite one of us to come to. So, um, I think there's been a little of a, of a mismatch between our, our perception of how many things we're, we're asked to go to and how many things we go to, and I'm trying to do something to address that. So at least we'll be able to be aware now of what's out there and...
Do we get to report on our family time, too?
Well, again, I'm not trying to turn this into a conversation.
How much of a little of that we have?
Well, again, you know, you're right, we asked for the gig. We should, we should do the gig. And so, um...
And we do.
It's something we should do.
We, yeah, but I, I agree with what this approach, but I understand what Mr. Sestari's saying, and when things are publicly stated that are factually incorrect, you know, I don't think, well, I don't have a problem saying something about that either. And I think what we're talking about here, we're dancing around the issue a little bit, is, you know, the 300th in particular. We all went to several of those events. I saw you guys at several of those events, and a couple of mine wasn't at, and I know you were at. So I just think that, you know, the community right now is mad as for other stuff, but that doesn't mean we're not doing our job.
I'm not trying to suggest we're not doing our job.
We can't, we can't be bashful about letting people know that.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest we don't do our job. I'm not trying to suggest we don't spend lots of hours. I think we all do. And I'm not trying to say I'm overly reacting to maybe, you know, a small but loud group of voices. All I'm trying to say is, we, you know, there are significant community events that if, that I think there's a disconnect sometimes, because some people expect us to be there, yet we're not actually asked to go to it, right? And so we have to, we have to sort of be able to know what, what, what people think is important enough for us to attend, and then attend. So, I mean, a lot of these things we go to on our own, just 'cause we are connected, but I, but I would like to, I, I think it would be useful for us to know what, what people want us at, so at least we have a...
That's a great idea.
We have, we have a comprehension of what's, what, what the communities, you know, or, or what the communities ask is, right? And, and whether or not we can go. I mean, like, you know, we're not gonna make everything every time. Some things we'll probably never make, but at least we'll know. Yes.
Yeah, to, to your point.
We, we shouldn't do as too much as a discussion item, but I do...
Yeah, to, to your point, uh, you know, I, I go to a lot of things, and, and several times during the week, people said, "Well, there was a bean supper over the summer that nobody came to." I didn't know about a bean supper, you know, and that's the thing. So you're right, we have to be, unless we're invited, they...
If you want us to come in an official capacity, you have to invite us, and then we'll, and then, obviously, it depends on whether people can make it, but we'll try. I mean, we all have families, we all work, right? We're all super busy, but it is part of the game.
There was, what's funny is, funny, there was a time when people were complaining in town that the selectmen were too involved in things, sticking their nose into everything, and they didn't belong there, they didn't get elected to do that, and they went on and on about us being too involved. And now they're yelling, "So we're not involved enough," so...
Gone full circle.
We'll figure out a balance.
Sorry when we try to make a decision.
When I first came to this board, I was told, "Don't go to all these things, 'cause you're just gonna annoy people."
I, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm just looking for a balance, and I feel, and I feel somewhat out of balance, and so I'm just trying to find a way that I can help us try to get to a balance. I'm not, I'm not saying we don't do our job. I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just, I'm just trying to be thoughtful about this, right, in a way I can. That's all.
That's a great idea.
We'll, we'll, we'll play it. We'll see how it goes.
I'll go to a bean supper.
Okay. All right.
Don't agree with me.
And that's it on liaison reports. Mr. Camallo, Tom, A, if you have anything to add to this conversation, and then B, segue right into Tom Manager's report.
I mean, for the record, Mr. Cutino, you did attend Maureen Dineal's retirement party. For the record, Mr. Catino, you did attend Maureen D'Nell's retirement party.
I, yeah, that one too, good, that's true.
Yeah, and Mr. Pelleco and Todd, you also attended the lunch on the town hall stuff put together for all the retiring stuff.
Again, I'm not looking for check, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for checkboxes here. I'm just trying to say.
Mr. Chairman, I will, I will point out that events with food will gather higher attendance.
Not beans, I'm sorry, not beans.
So should we ask for menu submissions as part of this?
Mr. Kamal, do you like beans?
That's a global, that's a global.
Mr. Kamal can go to the bean event, that's right.
Just like restaurant applications always go better when samples are brought, good menus will encourage you.
The chili cook-off, the chili cook-off is really good. That HPTA thing, I recommend. That was great.
Tom Manager's report, Mr. Kamal.
Capital Projects, I had included this item in case there were any additions to the list that was provided to the board before. At this point, there are no additions, but as we know, when the warrant opens, that list is going to increase.
Got it.
Operating budget updates so far, our discussions emphasizing that it's important that all departments adhere to the budget policy statement that the selectmen put forth. Our process is in full gear now. It's, it's, it's that time of the year where all we discuss our budgets. Third item, DPW Police Dispatch Union Contract Approvals.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're asking the board to sign off on the final contracts that have been negotiated, right?
Yes.
And these are, go ahead, Mr. Kamal, please.
And I provided a list of the contracts to the board.
Okay. And these are ones that we have discussed in executive session up until now?
Yes.
Right? And so, so what we do now is just a final vote to approve?
In open session.
Okay. And I already explained to everybody, we're not doing Tom Manager's contract, because we didn't have five people, and we wanted to do five people. So we're, we didn't, we were missing a selectman earlier, so we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it in the next executive session, then finalize. Okay? I just want to explain that one.
Okay. To that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, I move to approve the contract between the Town of Hopkinton and the Hopkinton Police Association for a three-year period effective July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017. I also move that we approve the agreement between the Town of Hopkinton and Local 272 of the Laborers International.
Just one second. Do we need to do these all separately?
Yes, separately.
Why don't we do them one at a time?
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion on the table to approve the contract with the police department.
Second.
And a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Could I just hear the motion again?
I move to approve the contract between the Town of Hopkinton and the Hopkinton Police Association for a three-year period effective July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017.
The Hopkinton Police Association?
That's the union.
That's the union.
For dispatch.
No, it's a police contract.
It's for police contracts.
This is the.
There's four separate motions, I'm sorry, there's four separate motions.
This is the.
And so this is just, we're just, yeah, all right. This is police, the police union.
Got it.
You good? We have a motion, we have a second. Are you, do you?
I understand. So it's basically a year and a half contract?
I think arithmetically, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous. Okay?
Okay. So it's staying with, I guess, it's staying with the police theme. I move to approve the agreement between the Town of Hopkinton and the Hopkinton Police Dispatchers Association, NASCOP Local 254A, for a one-year period effective July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. Sure that, what we?
Those dates are on.
They're correct. We had a one-year contract first, and then there's a second one-year contract.
Yeah, right, there you go.
Okay. I further moved to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Hopkinton and the Hopkinton Police Dispatchers Association, NASCOP Local 254A, for a one-year period effective July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
Got it. So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Mr. Hurd.
So we went to a central dispatch, and we're still doing a union agreement with the Hopkinton Police Dispatch. Is that appropriate?
Mr. Kamal.
Yes, that's appropriate. That's the recognized name of the union.
But it's still joint dispatch.
Joint Communications Center.
So through, so through the chair, just, just for clarity, right, this consolidated dispatch receives calls for both fire and police, but the dispatchers are all, are the dispatch union, so it's not like there's fire dispatchers and police dispatchers over there.
And that's what this union is representing, that group?
Right.
But it's called the police dispatch?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that's.
That's a good question.
I'm good.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous.
All right. And number four, I move to approve the agreement between the Town of Hopkinton and Local 272 of the Laborers International Union of North America for a three-year period effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2017.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Mr. Hurd.
So in this particular motion, as well as in the previous, just for perhaps stating the obvious, we're backdating some of these contracts. So by backdating some of these contracts, we have monies flowing backwards, if you will, to the employees, sort of retroactive. Is that a correct assumption, Mr. Kamal?
The contract process is a two-step process. First, the town signs an MOA. As soon as the memorandum of fund agreement is signed, the town begins paying.
Paying, but we're gonna be retroactive back to these dates?
We've paid the retro pay already.
We've paid the retro pay already.
So through the chair, it goes, it goes back to the expiration date of the, the last contract.
But that already has been paid. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure the citizens understand that we've got it budgeted, number one, and two, you're saying we've already paid that back, so we're kind of been paying the contract all along?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Question? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, present not voting, that's unanimous as well.
Could I just go back? One vote was with the Police Dispatchers Union. So the final contract that we've approved terminates in June of 2016, correct? So am I to assume that we're starting negotiations with them now so that we don't have to backdate the next contract, or assuming that both parties see eye to eye in that time?
That clarification is key, yes. We begin the negotiations early, hoping we conclude them earlier, but as we've seen, negotiations take long.
So those have already started?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
For the board's information, remember, we also talked about giving this unit enough time to experience the combined communications center, and then work out a contract agreement that reflects how that center operates.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the contracts? Future part agenda items. Mr. Hurd.
I believe we have a running list, some of which we haven't ticked off yet, correct? I'm all set for now.
Okay. Mr. Catino.
I'm all set for it now.
Mr. Moyer.
The Harvey's contract, I'd be interested in revisiting that.
Okay.
And then also, as Mr. Hurd pointed out, there's, there's a running list. I feel like we're not seeing the running list.
Okay. Mr. Sistari.
I'd like for our new IT director to come in sometime in the next couple of meetings, actually, so that he can give his assessment of our IT environment recommendations, and so that we can be moving into budget season with our recommendations in the right place.
Okay, good. Anything else? Okay. I'm gonna take, take us back to agenda item two here, the public forum. I just, I have a little thing I'm gonna read here. It's a statement from me as chairman of the board. So, "I'm in my sixth year on the Board of Selectmen, and during my tenure, the accomplishments of this board include: Protected the town's financial state during the most significant economic crisis since the Great Depression without dramatic impacts on taxes, services, or personnel. Carefully controlled the growth of the town operating budget, providing all residents with continued outstanding service at reasonable cost, resulting in taxing residents cumulatively over $4 million less than possible under our proposition two-and-a-half limit. We executed one of the very few budget under-rides ever undertaken in the state of Massachusetts, guaranteeing for taxpayers that additional $1.25 million in annual excess levy saved through our control of spending would not be reversed. We designed and implemented a funding process to begin to address the town's substantial long-term pension and other benefits liabilities and thereby prevent a future fiscal crisis. We gained approval of a new school. We gained approval of a new library. We gained approval of a new DPW facility. The board took control of marathon number distribution for the benefit of the town, resulting in over $400,000 in funds raised to date for local charitable organizations. We formed and led a multi-town collaboration group that was a key contributor to defeating a proposed Milford Casino. We advanced the revitalization of downtown, which is on its way to being the vibrant, engaging location we all hoped it would be. We purchased several important parcels in town to protect against further development and maintain the rural feel our residents value. We purchased the last two large parcels on Hayden Road to enable future town uses beyond the new school. This board advanced both the town trail network and the expansion of sidewalks identified by residents as key priorities. We developed a brand-new town manager into one of the finest professionals in the Commonwealth. This board directed a search process for a new police chief and made the final selection on an individual who's proven to be an outstanding hire. We established a permanent building committee and created a capital asset management plan to ensure that town structures are constructed as efficiently as possible and that all town assets are properly cared for. This board continued to work with Legacy and other large developers in town to accommodate their plans without destroying the town's character, and, last but not least, this board oversaw a spectacularly successful 300th anniversary celebration, which, as I touched upon, I know because I attended most of the events. So I'm sure there are other significant activities that I forgot simply because there have been so many. I have lived in this town for almost 20 years, and I can recall no other board that has accomplished so much in so many areas and with so little fanfare or even positive acknowledgement. This group has been visionary, thoughtful, and productive in advancing our town based upon the priorities set by our fellow residents. The work you see done at public meetings is the very small tip of a very large iceberg. We've done all of this relatively quietly, with great discretion and no self-promotion, and as a result, Hopkinton has come to take for granted excellence in local government. With all those achievements and more in 10 years of service to the town, and having spent almost half my life in some form of public service, I have decided to focus my time and energy on my family and other productive activities, and so I will not be running for reelection in May. I'm making this announcement now because I'd like to challenge a new generation in town to step forward, and I want to leave plenty of time for those people to make their decision and have a chance to prevent their vision to the voters. I look forward to competitive election and to new members of our town leadership who will build upon this board's success and continue to advance the evolution of Hopkinton in an equally positive and successful manner. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.